Just 'cause.
Just 'cause they don't trust the other one.
I'll make sure I figure that one out, 'cause I had it one time and failed.
Before we start the meeting tonight, we're gonna do something we haven't done, we're gonna continue. Everybody please rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call lead order, roll call.
Mayor Wester.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Here.
Tom.
Yes.
First item of business, we need a motion to appoint a new city council to replace Jerry Huston, use his expired term.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Whitey Steinke.
I'll second it.
Motion to appoint Whitey, is there a, roll call.
I think it's Ken.
Ken.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Always people are on way by that.
Can I make that motion to say Ken Steinke?
Ken Steinke.
Roll call.
Okay, Walton.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Glad you could step up and get sworn in.
Hi Dave.
Hi Dave.
Yes, it is, you still got your place.
I can't decide if I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially do the death of liability to start going through these of the city council members of the city.
And that I will faithfully and impartially be destined to my duty to start all the duties of the city council members of the city. Hereafter, required by law.
Congratulations.
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 So, was it snowing?
Congratulations, Ken. We have no public forum. Consent agenda, any additions, corrections?
No.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Ken, Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom. Steinke.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Okay, the first one is Resolution eighteen oh one, appointing city officers. Nothing has changed.
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Steinke.
Yes.
Walton. Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Resolution eighteen oh two, is appointing city attorney. Please, all the rates have went down.
I'm a bargain.
I bargained at any cost. Take just FYI, put that in memo, but usage of our city. The usage is up, and we've been doing a lot more, I don't think so, also. And we did, we also got Dave's bill now for the fourth quarter. And I didn't add those hours in, but I could, I could do that. But it continues to show high utilization, but like I said, we've had several things going on. And, you have nothing good thing to say about Dave than his work.
I think so. Have his job.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, I approve Resolution eighteen oh two.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution eighteen oh three is approving the fire chief. I have, actually, I've asked Scott for him to give Jim a raise, to match what the other towns are doing. If any of the firemen would like to interject anything, can I hear the assistant chief?
Yes.
I've had, I've had six months of firemen coming up and saying we're not paying Jimmy enough.
That's true. He's got a lot of paperwork and shit to do that he has, has, it's a lot of paperwork. About the new paging system and the new, he took a FEMA class. Yeah, FEMA and all this technical stuff with the, with the hagers and the cell phones. We get, we also do stuff with the cellphone.
I am responding to it.
Yeah, and this was, a couple of members got together and discussed this. We talked to some of the other chiefs in other neighboring towns. And Jim's got paid there and what they are. And. We're, we're not asking for what they get paid, because they get paid a lot more. All we're asking is he gets paid a hundred dollars a month.
Well, the motion is to pay twelve hundred dollars a year from Iowa.
Yeah.
And now, he goes after a lot of grants, we normally didn't go after them.
Right, right. He puts, puts a lot of time in, just keeping track of lawsuit things that come in. We've had a couple of those, where he has to put different reports in on lawyers that wanna know something.
I would tell you, Jim did not ask for this.
No, he did not ask for this.
He did not ask for it. Do you have a motion to approve eighteen oh three, is there a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Tom. Thank you.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes. If you guys would like to let him know that, we've done that for him.
Okay.
Thanks for your efforts.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
For everything you do.
Okay, Resolution eighteen oh four, is approving all the members of the Lakeview Volunteer Fire Department. Do we have that motion? So we're, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion is approved, resolution is approved, you guys are all still firemen, thank you.
It's fine.
We didn't get a pay raise though.
We didn't need one.
Okay, Resolution eighteen oh five is our official depositors.
Just know that this is the same resolution that passed two months ago. But we, we do this every time we see them in council.
Motion to approve? Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Resolution is approved, Resolution eighteen oh six, listing salaries of elected and appointed officers in the city of Lakeview. We didn't get a raise either.
Well, I know we did.
Yes, I did.
Just, I guess, just as point of comparison, put in total payroll in the memo for the past couple of years too. See that this year's seven forty-three thousand, and it's consistent with the past couple of years.
You have motion on eighteen oh six.
Will, like when, the union will change this probably or not?
Wages, you know, the wages would change then, we would bargain for change, union wages that going to affect then as of the first of July.
Oh, I see, okay.
Wages are already separate.
I'll make a motion, or somebody did or anything.
Second?
This is just recapping what the wages were last calendar year, and then this is the notice that gets published.
Okay.
Governor, do you have a second on eighteen oh six?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Walton. Thank you. You have, Tom.
eighteen oh six is approved. Okay, ordinance four eighty-eight, this is our second.
The second meeting of that, that ordinance that established its front yard setback requirements in the commercial district, and then also requires that residential uses in the commercial district, you know, minimum housing.
Do you have that motion?
I like that motion.
Second? Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Do you want to make the motion or wave it to me? Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom. Thank you.
Yes.
Second, so the readings have been approved. Ordinance four eighty-nine, this is our open spaces change to the ordinance. It's our second reading.
Second reading.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes. I'm not too sure about that.
You mean by that?
I'm a newbie, I don't understand the drive ways, don't understand it.
Do we wanna waive the third reading of four eighty-nine? We'll take that motion, if someone would like to do it. So the, second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom. Thank you.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Okay, second and third readings have been approved. Okay, ordinance four ninety, good news on the sewer rates, there isn't a?
Yeah, there are not much. We had told everybody from the start of our project, we looked at five years of raising rates, twelve and a half percent every year. And that memo from our financial advisor, it's on page sixteen. And we went over that two, three months ago, also, where it was stating that revenues weren't coming in as high as what we had anticipated, so that this would likely require then a sixth year of rate increase also. But, so I put that memo in there again, just for your, just for your consultation. But really, take a look at page twenty-one. This is what means things to, to people, is what does he do to make sewer charges. This proposal is again, a twelve and a half percent rate increase. And, and the totals then for this year. See what the totals are, base fee would be seventeen twenty-five, assumption fee at twenty dollars and seventy cents, total thirty-seven eighty-five. And just comparing that to even the five years ago, we started out at twenty-four sixty-four, so the, it's gone up to thirteen dollars plus over that time. And will continue to go up for next year. Any comments?
So do you do this every year, this, I tell you, every year?
We, we have, through the, through the fifth year, this being the fifth year. And, though we have, again, in, in preparation of paying off the debt service on that, on the lagoon.
So, now that you need a sixth year, because we don't have enough population, I mean, obviously, that's part of it.
That's part, part of it, just that revenues didn't come in like they did. The other thing that, that, when, these previous rates from the years were, the actual rate was established by our, by our city engineer. And he said we're gonna have twelve and a half percent raise every year. Well, what that was, was twelve and a half percent in the, in year one, and then it was a consistent rate step, okay? So that by the time you added on to that twelve and a half percent in the first year, the second year only becomes twelve percent. And the third year of what they called the twelve and a half percent rate increase was actually only eleven percent. So, it was, it was a constant rate step, instead of a constant percentage. Does that make sense?
I don't know. So, I know that you expect, that the normal expectation is for utilities to be supported by utility rates.
Yes.
But, since now we have to have another year of increases that weren't planned, the public wasn't counting on that. And I think you're really gonna hear complaints in year four, five, and six, because every year is gonna be more.
True.
So is it gonna be another twelve point nine, or it's not going to be that because of the step?
Well, now we're figuring it twelve point three eight percent next year.
Then we haven't taken bids yet either.
No, and of course, that's all up in the air about that.
So is there not any of, you know, is there not a way to put some money into this, to say, at least to the community, you know, we understand, and we're trying to little offset a little bit to the charge to the community? The community also has to understand that when, when projects are voted down, that would have increased the population, would have increased the taxation, would have increased the revenue. When those projects are voted down, it impacts the rest of us, it impacts everybody. And I don't know if the community, I'm just saying, I think it needs to be on the record, because, because it might have been different, is what I'm saying.
Okay, sure.
You have the same, I don't matter, I mean, basically, you know, if you, if you add another five hundred people, you know, I mean, you still have the average. And it would have made a difference.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Nathan, you have a question?
First, does a campground, do they have any excess money out of them paying their employees for the year? Does, does a campground make anyone?
Usually campground makes enough to pay for all employees that work there.
There's not a lot.
Our, our goal of the campground is that they'd raise enough money to play, pay for all parks operations.
I'm just curious, you know, the campground don't pay for water, sewer, electricity, out of their budget, if some of that is left over, could go into the sewer budget?
Leftover is not a word we use very often.
That's just not, I mean, we, we pay, we pay ourselves for that, for the use of water and sewer down there, but it comes out of the water and sewer accounts, not the campground, so. Although it certainly, it certainly could.
I just think maybe in the next year or so, it'd be something to think about.
We could, you know.
I know it's not the norm.
Sure, and, and Tammy, we were talking about this before too, about other revenue streams to pay for the debt service. You know, what do you do other than look towards property taxes? Pretty difficult then to, you know, for that to?
Sorry, we have, have looked at other towns, and their work considerably quite a bit less than others.
When we started, we were, you know, and when we're, when we're done with all of these rate increases, we'll be, we'll be on the high end, for sure.
It's, it's just hard for, you know.
Nobody wants to be at that.
Yeah, to see this keep going up, and now we're adding another year, and depending on what the bids come in, we could be adding another year, and.
Or subtract.
Well, that's a feasibility, I know. And we can only hope.
Because we are supposed to get something on the bids by the tenth of January, like DNR documents.
On the environmental impact document.
But he did mention that, you know, for all the cities, that we could take bids, and we have sixty days to get remainder of the pit fork in, is that, we could actually take the bids, as long as, uh.
Just that, and, and Bob Beentrich had said that, dude, we, we could go ahead and proceed through bid letting, we're prepared to do that now. But, just that you got this environmental thing still hanging out there, as, as unresolved, you know, very likely there are no environmental impacts. But it's just hanging out there, is unresolved, and, and it could potentially affect timeline more than anything else for when the contractor can start. So, when, when the contractor is bidding with any type of uncertainty, prices will go up. You know, that's the argument. So if we just get the environmental documentation taken care of beforehand, the contractor will bid with certainty about what, when, when they can begin their construction, and they could bid with more certainty, and hopefully a sharper pencil that way.
As quick we take a bid, the better we got, the better price, is what we always.
That's what we're trying now.
So we don't know what the holdup is on, on this?
Well, the staff is finishing it up, but that's about it.
Well, I talked to you the other day, so he sent a report to you, we never got it, and he was gonna resend it, we still haven't got it. And he said that he'd have something by the tenth of January. The guy's nowhere to call him back. He never resented. He thought we'd have everything. He's a guy I talked to and thanked him that day too. But if we do ordinance four ninety, a long timeline, that goes in the paper, that we have other readings, that he's, the public could have a chance to, or some input.
See on the chip, put there.
Yeah, that's, that's why we read it three times, if it's something, especially if there's a question. That being the case, we could use the motion on four ninety, starting anyway.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Tom.
Yes.
Ordinance four ninety, the first reading is passed. Bill, you wanna come up and talk about the bid letting for our underground? Hopefully it'll happen.
We have one new council, mother doesn't, we bid this last year. The company, Delta, that's another. See, we can talk about that. It's basically rebid the exact same project as we had last year. Exactly.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
It's basically, every, every year, we try to vary so much, re-bury underground. To keep ahead of the Underground Falls, and, but one of the big projects is the area, by Dave's area, where this underground, series lighting is all going bad, rebid it all that. That's, that's the bulk of the area. Out by TCT Trucking, getting that residential buried. Our goal is to have the entire town buried, that's the, the last area right out there to get buried.
Okay.
That's in section nine, Stuart Bone nineteen, is TCT Trucking, the businesses along the highway there. But that was our goal, get the whole town buried. And the other little areas around twenty.
So Seventh Street then is, is buried, but it's getting bad, is that what you said? Where Walton lives?
That's a series lighting.
Okay.
And it's, we've had multiple loges up there.
I think if you move that one pole, it would solve the problem.
Good try, you're still working, aren't you?
No, the lights that are in series are the ones right across from the campsite, right, three years ago.
And there's two poles, well, we already had them sat, that were hit by a, one was hit by a car, and the other one was hit by a snowplow, and those are getting replaced, they're already sitting there. And we kind of promised the customers that we'd been done, but it ain't done, so. It's just, a lot of our wires, been withdrawn a long time, it's just trying to stay ahead of the problems.
So, I guess, just a couple of points on this is, you remember that when we bid this last year, we got what we thought was, was a nice bid price, and we added some distance to the project, because, because the original book came in under, under what our budgeted amount was. So we added some to it. This would propose to keep that additional stuff in there, okay? So where we, we had budgeted normally around eighty thousand dollars a year, and this ends up being estimated about ninety-six. Now, that would be for this current fiscal year then, but we'd also have some money budgeted for next year, so we would, would still be fine on that. So that's the first issue, but the second issue deals with Van Manen and their, any resolution to that issue. Because I think we're, hopefully we're getting close to a resolution. I'm gonna talk about that now, and I'm gonna talk about it later, Dave.
Later.
But can, can we go ahead and proceed on a bid letting the project again?
Yes.
So you have motion to authorize the bid letting?
Authorize the bid letting.
So.
Second.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese. Tom. Thank you.
Yes?
The council can reject all bids, too, I mean, that's the last of the sentences in your, in your bid.
Well, let's take a look.
Wait, before we do, while Bill's sitting here.
I think so.
Everybody wants, these are some things that Scott and Bill have come up about, parking on the streets.
You threw my name out there?
Well, Scott don't want to, but, anyway, I'm gonna bring this up in the next council meeting. It's a some way to have a three-step process, Roy, Seth, that we would keep track of the tickets, and the third one, we would, a hundred bucks and a tow. Well, we'll have to bring this to the council as an ordinance change. But if anybody has any input, now would be the time.
Just, I guess, know that for our parking tickets, or especially our snow tickets. You know, when they, we, our ordinance says when snow is predicted, falling, or during snow removal operations, cars can't be on the road. So, we ticket people, we just give them tickets for, for parking on the road, and it's a twenty dollar ticket. And, and, and then there'll be several people during the course of winter, get several tickets. So, anyway, the chief and the mayor are gonna pitch this idea about having a graduated scale about, about fines.
So are you gonna do it, put it in the paper a couple of weeks?
Is that during certain hours of the day, or night?
For?
All the time, if it's snowing like in the daytime, I mean, they need to get their vehicles off.
If it snows enough that you're gonna plow, the police give them tickets, that's.
There, there isn't any time limits in our ordinance. You know, the practical side of things is, if it snows during the day, people are still parked on the street downtown.
Right.
You know, it, and, and that's, and that's okay, but.
Can't fix that.
Right.
So how do you decide, though, who gets the ticket? I mean, does, does the streets department notify the, you just drive around them?
Right, if it's on the street.
Because it's pretty obvious when they're gonna plow, and they're gonna give them tickets.
You just wanna make sure that you're consistent, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, some people come in and says, twenty bucks, and I don't have to move the car. But twenty bucks, twenty bucks, but we gotta get them off the street, we're gonna hit somebody with a plow on this day, and we're gonna buy the car. But at least if we have it in writing, it'll cover somehow, that we can lease a tow you after the third time.
I'm just in talking to Bill, it's the same people, just like everything else, over and over again, that just don't do it. So, we need something to get their attention, it's next impossible for these guys to get through some places with them, and for twenty bucks, they don't care. So, and I know Sac City had a graduated, thinking that's actually where one of those came from, is their ordinance. That, maybe the first time's a noose, but then we need to get your attention.
But the first time you, you give a warning, or?
No.
We just give.
A twenty dollar warning.
We'll come up with something.
Anyway, the next council meeting, we'll have something, we can pick and choose what we want, we should do something.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Royce.
Thank you.
Bill, the snow removal was a good job.
Thanks.
I'm gonna have to tell you guys when you're all sitting with the day, what I've got, we can pass that on. We get good compliments. Okay, now you wanna do your capital projects?
Yeah, let's just. So at the last council meeting, we had all the department heads come, present their departmental needs assessment. Out of that, then, we would prepare our capital improvements plan. And, just that when, we, as we prepare this plan, if it's in year one, it would be proposed to be included in our next budget. Okay? So, then in subsequent years, we do, we want to plan accordingly, so we have a five-year, five-year plan, but a lot of, a lot of the year two, three, four, five, are, are much less defined about what happens during that time. But we do wanna continue, especially if we're saving money, we're gonna make sure that, that we put that in the plan, so that we, we continue to set that money aside every year. But I wanna focus a lot more on year one tonight. And, again, just the notion that if it's listed here, if it makes the cut and stays in the capital improvements plan, it would be included in the budget plan. Okay? So just going down the list on technology upgrade, we've done that annually, and that's used by several department for five thousand times. Financial audit next year, we, we gotta do this annual exam every year, but this would be four years then, since we had a full audit. Plus, if we expend enough money with this sewer project, we will have to do a full audit. So, I would expect that we're going to have to do that, and it'd be about time for that, anyway, that's about double the price of this annual exam. Update the Lakeview website, is proposed that we would use five thousand dollars to do that, you see it come from hotel motel taxes. So, more marketing, community marketing. Housing study, I know there's, there's interest in doing something with other communities, or countywide, on a housing study. So I wanted, would like to have some funds available, that we could participate in that, in some regards.
What is a countywide one where?
Same, you know, about the same way as, as, as us doing our own, each, we just put together a, a composite plan for the county, but each community would have their own section of the plan. Walk-up Dropbox, that's just a proposal to have it on a, on a post. Walk-up drop box, that's just a proposal to have it on a, on a post property out front, be the southeast corner of the, of the city hall property, so that, mainly so folks just gotta get out of the cars all and they'd be able to put it in a, in a drop box. That Kay would actually walk by then every day when she goes to get the mail.
So it's not gonna be a drive-up, so they have to get out, so is, have you had a real request for this, a real need?
It, it is a, just another amenity, I suppose you'd say, more, maybe more than anything else.
Or you, you already get out now?
If it was a drive-up, I could see it.
People, yeah, they gotta get out of their car right now.
I can't see it either, especially, I, you know, the box is there, the only thing I can see wrong with the box up there. Is, my hand couldn't fit in there, but there's people's hands that could fit right in that box.
It's pretty close, we, it's about as small as what we've been able to.
I know, but I don't need smaller, but maybe you could drop the.
Drop the, the box down a little lower so that they have to go in there.
That'd be my only. I notice that when I drop it in, that it's probably, sometimes it's level.
If, if it's full, it's about level.
Yeah.
The only people that complain are those that struggle walking, and it's slick out there, don't wanna walk up to the sun. That's the only people I've ever.
But they can walk in the grass.
Well, I, I think a drive-up one would be fantastic, but where are you gonna put it?
We're just gonna figure out where to put it over here, we thought about going through here, but that'd just be a shortcut for the kids to cut through.
I would just soon have a sidewalk out here instead of.
Yep.
Personally, so we'd have to walk across the wet grass and whatever, or walk out on the street when we're done here. Cross from this door over to this, to the sidewalk over there. I've been after that for four years, ready to get anything done.
I don't know if Bill could do that for eight hundred bucks or not.
The sidewalk?
Yeah.
It's a one-way street or something out here, somewhere to the post office.
It, to make a, to make a drive-up one work.
Otherwise it'd be driving on the roadside road anyway.
You know, it would really be, we'd put like a tra, a diagonal traffic lane through this corner, but I mean, that's a huge undertaking that, I, I wouldn't suggest we'd do that.
Almost don't wanna take away.
I just think you leave it alone. Other than lowering it like you say, so it doesn't get so filled in there.
I think, yeah, build a new.
He made the last one.
I know. I look like a cardboard box to me.
It has been cardboard and now it's wood.
No, it's.
Oh, it is wood, no. Well, I just thought, if it was lower, they could, that looks kinda dangerous to me, you know, people put that in, you know, and, you know, I don't know, maybe we don't have no dishonest people.
I, you know, I don't know, cause like you say, it can happen. And I would tell you, something happened today that has not happened. Ever maybe to, to my recollection. Somebody put cash in there and of course it says, do not put cash, do not deposit cash.
Yeah.
Forty bucks. Put forty dollars in with a note on the envelope that says, put on my bill.
Did they sign it?
No name.
No name?
Oh, that was mine.
Quit.
I told the wife to put the day one.
Suppose they'll ever think of that?
Crescent-shaped council table, I guess I'm interested in, in any discussion on that.
I like it.
I do too.
I, I, I like it too.
I don't know how much it costs, but I like it.
Say, that, that price is not a real price, that's just a.
It was an eight hundred dollars.
You know, I put in five thousand dollars, I think, when I do some research, I think I'm gonna be way low.
The only thing is, if you're, gotta make, that wire you gain by putting the table that way, if it's crescent shaped.
So that everyone would be.
You can see everybody and everybody can see.
Right.
You can have it long enough.
You're like, look over here, over here.
Yeah.
That's what it would be.
Like Sac City.
Like Sac City.
I don't know if you've ever come to a council meeting as a private citizen.
Oh, yeah.
But when you sit over there, don't you feel a little segregated? I, I mean, I always did, it's hard to listen to the conversation, it's hard to, especially when the room got crowded.
So what about other meetings with committed, how many places you can have, enough for every commu, or say, community club?
Yeah, and if, when, I think when that happens, the library, I'll go over to the library when that income.
And the library didn't probably use this table.
Or listen. But if once that gets done, I think a lot of them will move over there, cause it, it is difficult.
A one-sided table, you know, just put the camera where it is back there.
I think it's something that we could talk about, goal setting and stuff.
Right, I don't think it's a meeting.
Maybe get some real hard numbers and do something with this.
You saw it too there.
Yeah, just cut it right in half and.
There you go.
You could.
Yeah.
Back on it.
But it is hard to hear, like when that furnace is running.
Right.
You can't hear anything that's over there, so.
And the library, when they have their meetings, they're excited about having a place they could actually go in here, the community club would go there probably if homecoming tried. Cause whether it's winter or summer, you can't hear.
Yeah.
And half of the people have got their back to it, so they can't hear.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I can't see nothing wrong with it, I, I think we, you know, if we could even look at this as an option to cut it in half.
Put it this way.
You know, not to spend a whole bunch of. Cause this is very.
You'd be spending just as much as you would for a table.
Oh, boy, I put this table on.
Are you curious to see the numbers for an actual table?
Well, it could be that this table would be used over there at the other one.
That's what I thought, maybe they would utilize this one over there.
Would that be a J L B one, carrying this?
How would you get out the door?
Bill.
We.
Bill.
We carried it from upstairs city council down here.
And he made the turn.
Thirty years ago, yeah, he took the legs off.
Yeah.
Prisoners made that.
Yeah.
That's where it came from.
Sure.
We got our money from that.
That's why I like a man with experience, how to move stuff.
Good job, Bill, let's step up.
I thought it worked good for my table, so.
Yeah. Chain saw, maybe.
Um, and we keep going down the list. This underground replacement in electric, we'll can, we wanna continue to make this an annual investment, that we're always budgeting some amount of money for, and before we had said, well, let's do underground one year, rural the next under. If we do this big rural project next year, hopefully we're good to go for a little while, we would focus a lot more on underground, but we wanna continue to set that, that money, get that money in the budget every year to, to do a little project. That rural electric line project, you see there's eight hundred thousand dollars there, which would be proposed to be financed with, with revenue debt. Electric capital fund, again, that's just, this will be money that we continue to set aside every year, so we have money on hand for equipment purchases. Pumper truck in the fire department. Two hundred ninety thousand was their, their estimate was, I think, two eighty-seven-ish. To where that would be financed again by general obligation debt and by fire capital funds, some money that's already set aside. Now, with that, I talked with Jimmy about Chief Garles, about when we would look to proceed to get into the purchase. And they, Jimmy would anticipate he'd be at the next city council meeting to discuss this, that they, they're getting a couple of things refined on, on their proposal, but they would, would come to the council. Seeking permission to, to proceed, really.
How long was that, I, I forget, what did they say, how long was that?
Well, it was almost a year.
No, to get it, but how long was that, was Rita gonna accept that bid or pull that bid as? It wasn't just a few certain couple of months or something?
I don't think it wa, no, I, I doubted this, I mean.
But I'd start building the truck for a year. It'll be a year before they even start building it.
Oh, I thought it was a year before they get it.
They're gonna buy the chassis first.
Right.
And it's up to.
But I thought.
A year before they even start building on it.
But I thought he said that there was a limit as to how long that bid was good for, I mean, that they had to agree to it or whatever.
Guess I don't know. I think you're right, there is something, but I don't know what it is.
I think there is.
By the time it makes it to, to you, it'll prove it or be in.
Must be okay or he would be.
Most of them trucks we got sitting in the sheds there for a year before they ever get them out of, you know, built and.
It takes a long time.
Oh, yeah. It's quite a.
It's a process.
The other thing that I wanna talk about in regards to purchasing that truck is how we would finance it. And, you know, historically what we would do is, is just borrow money from the banks. And we've always had the same kind of amount of debt service that comes out of the fire department budget itself and, and we pay that back. As we get into some budget stuff, and we'll talk about this balance that we have in our general fund. And I just at least throw that out, we can discuss this more about would you just rather basically have an internal loan again, and borrow some money out of our general fund. Instead of paying interest.
General fund's getting pretty big.
Has a substantial balance.
Does this two ninety include the seventy that, that was put back for the truck?
Yeah, yeah, that's, this is the cost, the cost of it, and there is about seventy that's, that's.
Set aside already.
Set aside already, yeah. Uh, two air packs, wanna try to do a couple of air packs every year, about seven thousand dollars each. We do budget some equipment replacement costs and then they'd also fund some of those with donations. Parks department, continue to set money aside in the general capital fund, we've done forty-seven hundred bucks out of that for several years. Uh, work on the Camp Crescent Camping Space Project and then the Drainage and Green Infrastructure Projects. We would need to discuss how you would finance those. The Camping Space Project here is proposed to be financed by the general fund or by TIF. Uh, or a combination thereof, and then the green infrastructure would be sponsor, uh, the sponsored project. Same thing then with the fish station, the fish barrier and dewatering, that would be that S R F sponsored project. Would propose to continue to do annual trade-in on those two Toro lawn mowers, that's worked out pretty well for us. Now it's getting to be about a thousand dollars per year on trade-in, but again, that, have good, reliable mowers without ever much maintenance and basically no maintenance cost other than. Filters and that type of stuff. Picnic tables, we'd look to do about sixteen new picnic tables, sixteen would be actually the number of new sites which would be created. Would continue to budget for the, that aquatic herbicide, about nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, funded by some combination of D N R grant, county, L P A, and then the city's general fund. We went and talked to the county about their financial commitment to the, the herbicide and the harvester. And they made the same contribution then that the L P A did, which would be a third of the total project cost up to seventy-five hundred dollars. Okay? Cause if we are successful in getting this D N R grant again, which we hopefully would be, it'll, their share would actually be quite a bit less than, than seventy-five hundred.
They wanted to give the smaller amount if they could.
That, now they, they still don't wanna spray more, they're, they're only gonna spray a hundred and fifty feet out.
Just like we did the last two years.
I know, but they don't wanna do more because of the fish, right?
Yeah, Ben doesn't wanna do anymore, that's the, the really factor.
Well, it seems like, to me, it seems like almost a cheaper way to go, you know, is that spraying it like that, but if he don't, I know he knows more about that, killing the fish and.
But there were some complaints from the East End this past year.
It didn't work quite as good.
Yeah, it didn't work as good the second time as it did the first time.
They thought maybe they didn't come up close enough or whatever.
Some, if you get, like Don Durner said, it looked like a million bucks, but up by us, it didn't work as good.
And, but the D N R does.
No, I thought that's.
The spraying, right?
No, no, they hired them.
They hired them.
That was kind of a crappy mess on the north side, that's the issue.
Yeah. Yes, it was.
Wish they'd make some kind of deal that, where they could, almost like the, a rake that they could hook onto and pull that out of there somehow, you know, when you're, when you're.
Yeah, cause the paddle wheels bust them out of that stuff that's close to the top of paddle wheels, but then all that floats to shore makes a mess.
But if the herbicide is applied correctly, as it must be in some areas, I mean, I don't know if it's the wind draft or what it is, when they're spraying.
It could've been, cause that part where it's usually windier and it'll get out on these sides.
It is, yeah.
And it may have been windy that day, but I know it didn't work, when I mentioned Don, it didn't work as good, he said, oh, it worked really good by his parts.
Yeah.
And he's on the north side too.
Yeah.
But he's kind of.
In the coke, yeah, around there.
He was protecting, he got out of weapons. And when we cut grass with the harvester and we got close, you could tell it was worse.
I guess, so my point is, is like, we give them this money, right, is that how we do this, we give it to the D N R?
No, no.
Well, yeah, the.
Or we give it to the company?
You know, practically speaking, uh, they give money to us, all of the bills funnel through the city.
Okay. But at least we could make them aware that we had some complaints from certain areas.
I already told them it didn't work that way.
Did you? Good job, go, you go, Gary.
New ropes and buoys, those other ones are about ten years old now and, and really starting to fray as far as the ropes go, about a thousand dollars there. The, two more additional kiosks for the historic assets and that's been, we got about half that money from Sac County and Don at Grants. A stove and an air conditioner for the, for the shelter house. Uh, I would tell you that we have a, an opportunity, we can just buy a stove right now for the north side and glad you had a good one for three hundred and some dollars, so we may just go ahead and do that.
That'd be a good deal, yeah.
When they get there, they'd like to have a stove working.
You don't have two of them.
I don't know. General capital fund, we're, again, we're funding our, our software, this is coming from what's described as police. We're setting money aside so that every second year we, we have money available to purchase a new truck. Speed trailer, eight thousand dollars for that, but around half or a little more is, is proposed to be funded by the step grant. Radio for the patrol vehicle, about four thousand dollars. And then these, the vests. How many vests is that, chief, a couple?
I think we've got up to, should be three of them. We have a fifty percent matching grant through the Department of Justice.
Very good. All right, sanitary sewer, of course, our big project next year. Four, four million dollars on that S R F. And as we budget, and you, you look at that and go, we have a four point six five million dollar project, this is four million, it, it will certainly cross two fiscal years, so we'll expend some money this year and some amount of money next year. Public Works Capital Fund, again, setting money aside for, for equipment purchases. Lift station upgrade, we want to continue to set that money aside, or budget that every year so we can upgrade lift stations, it's proposed we would update that Camp Crescent lift station next year. We had historically always budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for that, and when we would propose to up, up that amount so that it's thirty-five thousand, especially with that one, that's a bigger, a bigger lift station down there. And then we're paying ourselves back for this loan that, that we made to ourselves to buy that sewer jetter, and this would be year five of that, it's the final year paying ourselves back on the, to purchase that sewer jetter. Streets, that M fifty-four east shore drive intersection has already been done, but we would pay our share to the county during next budget year, which was seventeen thousand. Proposal to start doing some seal coating, and this just says twenty-five thousand dollars. Based on what Wall Lake has spent, it's about two bucks a square yard. And that would do somewhere around ten blocks or a little more. Dump truck set aside fund, that we would, would put money aside to purchase either a, a new or a really good used dump truck. In either year two or three, and this would propose to put sixty thousand dollars away for that. To build a public works or electric shop, at two hundred thousand dollars. We have hundred twenty thousand dollars set aside right now. And by this time, the end, the end of next budget year, then we would have enough money available to actually do the project. So this would propose we would budget to do the project. It's a question of whether we would wanna do it this summer or not, and no, Bill's maybe not too keen on doing that, we got enough stuff going on, so we'll push it off until summer of nineteen, but. We would have the money available to do that. Room for the skid loader, this would propose to. Broom for the skid loader, this would propose to, uh, purchase a new broom, fifty five hundred dollars from that Public Works Capital Fund. Uh, to repair a couple of intakes, and these are both down at First and Vine, and that's just eleven hundred dollars there. Water to, uh, specifically replace, uh, four valves. That are up there on Fifth and Seventh and Ninth and Jackson, these are right around where we did that new street project last year. They're not in the new pavement, but they're, they're close. Uh, these would, would be proposed to, uh, be replaced. Rebuild or replace five fire, fire hydrants, focusing on the rebuild part hopefully first, there's five thousand dollars for that.
Are these, are these a pretty bad chance where they're not working at all, or they're just?
I defer to Bill on that one.
You talking about fire hydrants?
Yeah.
There's a, three of them there leaking, where you can't even shut them off, and one's cracked, that's gotta be totally redone. Basically trying to get the ones repaired if you can, personally.
So that would be probably a priority one?
Yep, yeah, and there was one on, one on Provost's crew, that one doesn't work, and that's, that one's cracked.
I just, you know, hook on the expected water if you had a fire, that's not a good thing, so I'd say I'd be on top of the list. Can they open them up if they had to? Yeah.
Bad times, winter time, you shut them off, they just, they freeze up.
But these water valves on Fifth, Seventh, Ninth and Jackson, it's not in the new pavement, it's just.
No, that's in the old blacktop. We got, we were just too busy last summer to even attempt doing that.
Just the last few things here. Also talk about water valve replacement program. We have talked. And wanted to do routine water valve replacement for years. And we've done some, but just not, we haven't been real consistent about it, so this would, yeah, keep trying to institute, uh, water valve replacement. Cause we know that some of the valves out there don't necessarily work, or they don't, certainly don't close all the way. And when they, and when we gotta do some repair work, then we're shutting off huge amounts of town in order to make it happen.
Like Main Street's pretty well been done, right?
Main Street's okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's been, when they put the new street in, they did that.
Yes, yep, yep, yep. Water tower, uh, internal loan, that's another one of those that we, we borrowed ourselves some money when we, when we repainted the, uh, water tower. That's the last payment on that. And, uh, Public Works Capital Fund, again, setting money aside and the valve replacement. I think I got that listed twice.
Just saved ten thousand dollars for the table.
There you go.
There you go.
You learn quick, don't you?
Any comments on those things? That is, otherwise as we start to work on.
How long does a water valve run? What is the life of one of them?
Geez, you know, that's a, that's a good question, whether I'd say, if I'd tell you forty or fifty years, you know.
But you gotta, but you gotta exercise them, you can't just leave them set there.
You gotta shut them on and off every year.
Which we do, have you, have you seen the guy with his, just a pickup truck, he's got a hydraulic, uh, system where he opens and closes valves for?
Oh.
And he's in town usually for, uh, one day a year.
I've never seen it.
Yeah.
Day two. But then I don't, maybe, I ain't home all the time.
I wouldn't know what he was doing, so.
Yeah, he wouldn't get this, a very nondescript thing, you can't even hardly tell. But yeah, that's what, that's what he's doing. You know, he's, he's opening and closing these valves, he counts the total rotations. And, and, uh, then you're, write those down, you're able to, when you're closing them then, and you, you count the proper amount of turns that ought to be closed. Nothing new. I say I, I talked with him right before Christmas and he, he was just very upfront about the fact that he had some other stuff and we got pushed back.
Oh, well, we don't push you back.
I, I would just hate to see TIF money used for the campground, personally. Especially when we have quite a bit in our general fund. Especially with campground bringing in considerable amount of fun. I just think that TIF money might be needed somewhere else.
The faster we get the campground done, the better.
That's right. I agree, a campground is huge.
Bill don't like to hear that, but. I was down there the day when the sewer was flooded. Having a lot of fun.
But I mean, that's a big revenue.
Campground bring a lot of money to town.
That's gonna be the place too, Cap. Well, if, you know, if they keep working on the lake, that's gonna be a big thing.
Well, just that the, you know, there's year two, three and four, and I want you to take a look at those, but, uh, that would just be for, for future planning purposes. Give some idea about what the, what the expected projects could be then, uh, coming up in, in future years. And really, I tell you what, we're gonna budget this stuff this year, it's just a huge year, we got lots of stuff going on. And sewer, uh, sewer lagoon and rural electric line, we go. Throw in that underground electric project and that makes for a pretty full year.
We cleaned sewers two months last year and still didn't get what done, what I wanted to get done. We need to spend more, more time on cleaning sewers too.
You gotta find the right high school kids.
But, you know, I, I would tell you, I don't know that the city's had any blockages since we.
We haven't had any. It pays off.
You've been focusing on the trouble spots that we normally have, right?
We, we did the whole town, and then we're going, we go back and do the trouble spots. We've done them two or three times already, but yeah, we've never had a one.
How long had been before, when that been done before, for the whole town?
Uh, I'll plead the fifth. But it keeps Pete Howe out of town.
We use a contract for it.
We've done everything ourselves.
Get it done in four years.
Yeah, that's the, that's the big truck now.
That machine does a beautiful job.
It's paid for itself.
Oh yeah.
Good thing we didn't split with Wall Lake. You're gonna buy it fifty fifty?
Yeah, they talked, somebody told me about that the other, well, I mean, I was on the council when we did that, but, uh, they was wishing they had.
We're glad they didn't.
I know. Yeah, I'm glad too, because otherwise it might have been shot and now we're dead, you know, wrecked or whatever, so.
You never know when you share.
I, you know, out on the farm, that was my policy, not the loan stuff.
That's my policy too, Terry. Don't borrow stuff out.
I don't do that now either, even to my.
You don't come back?
I shouldn't say that, even my son-in-law, so I don't do that. He's only watching this. But, you know, even it's, uh, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a deal.
We, we cleaned out four storm sewers too.
Had never been done.
That worked plug solid, yeah. That machine's got a lot of power.
And when did you buy that, last year?
Oh no.
This could be the fifth year payout.
Is it by five years?
Yeah, this could be the fifth year payout here.
We don't have a camera with that, do we?
No.
We got everything else with the camera, or we got, is something we need? Do you care what it looks like?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it this year. I mean, we gotta have the manpower to go do it, you know, and I wouldn't do it.
How about a city administrator report? Good news report.
Yeah, not much. Uh, I just question for you about holding a city council planning session. Can we, can we have a, can we schedule a date for when we would be able to do that? Now, um, next Monday is union negotiation time. We'll exchange proposals and keep bargaining that night. We'll start at six o'clock next Monday. At six. What does next, either next Tuesday or Wednesday look like as far as any chance about getting together for, uh, council goal setting session?
The sooner the better. Whatever works, yeah.
Well.
Wednesday, the tenth, work okay for folks?
And the sixth is, I don't know.
Now, what's that?
The sixth?
That's a Saturday.
You know, what, oh, what, oh, you're gonna do that. Monday, the eighth is.
Monday is, Monday the eighth is union. Can we, can we do a planning session then on Wednesday, the tenth?
Thank you.
Seven o'clock here. And then just as we look at our schedule then for the, for the month, we would have planning session then on the tenth. Regular city council meeting again on the fifteenth. And then it would propose that we would have one more special council meeting for budget review. And I'd like to look at the twenty second on that. We'd just have the budget basically all done by that time. And, and go through a budget review with you and really have a lot of the, a lot of the work basically done by then. We'd be able to leave then, when you had anything figured out about when you're picking on.
You said twenty second would have a.
Yeah, let's do a. Goal, uh, we have the budget meeting on the twenty second.
Fifty is the, I don't know.
Right. Um, just, uh, just a couple of things. Lakeview hosts Zach County League. And it's next Thursday, so it's Thursday, the eleventh, and we'll post that out at Thirsty Cart. We'll get the back room out of Thirsty Cart.
That's next Thursday?
Next Thursday is the eleventh.
It starts at what, six, seven?
Social time at six thirty, dinner at seven. And then, pardon? Not really.
Do you usually party? Looks a little late.
But I've not given them much thought.
What, six P M?
Six thirty, social time, and dinner's at seven.
What do you usually do?
For, for a program?
Sometimes the speakers.
Little bit, um. Maybe just thinking about our splash pads, see if you would come discuss our program and, our, our project and how those things work. See if anybody has any interest in splash pads.
Do you sell them or what?
What's that?
Are you selling them or what? No.
Just trying to fill, fill the time up.
But this work about a commission though, this would case.
Yeah, there you go.
One tree if we sell ten, no.
Northwest Iowa League is the following Thursday, then it's January eighteenth. We got together last month for, to do our Christmas auction that, that funds the scholarship that they have in the area. And it really bad turnout, the weather was, was not too good, so they, they did not do the auction, so we'll do the auction up there on January eighteenth.
Where's that at?
Spencer, up at the Lake County Event Center.
Nice venue.
That's a five P M start up there?
That's five P M, yeah. And they did not elect a new, new officers yet, so John's still the president for one more month.
One more time.
That's a lot of change.
I don't know, we'll take it over.
Okay, we're gonna go into closed session for the, you need to have a motion to go into closed session. Second?
And as, and you and the L N, uh, litigation. Is that all right?
Sure.
Roll callers.
Did we get a second?
I second.
Yeah? Bolton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, more?
Yes.
Thanks, Bill, of course.
Did you want me for that, that underground guy?
Yeah, we should.
Do you want me for the other one?
Yeah, just as well. We gotta turn off the cameras off first.
Good job.